Good evening. Before we start, I ask your forgiveness for our tardiness. We were discussing some issues upstairs that needed a bit more time. I do apologize. We owe you 17 minutes and we'll try to get through some very important business this evening in an expeditious manner. Thank you for joining us for the business meeting of Kansas City Public Schools for the month of May in 2014. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Mannsir? Ms. Montaro? Ms. Robinson? Mr. Rogers? Mr. West? And Mr. Heil?
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Mannsir? Ms. Montaro? Ms. Robinson? Mr. West? And Mr. Heil?
Yes, that brings us to the superintendent's monthly recognitions.
Okay, we have a number of folks we're going to recognize, community leaders, terrific teammates, and .org award. Ms. Heidi Houston-Stewart, please lead us in this process.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good evening to Board Chair Heil, to our board members, staff, and guests who are with us this evening. We have several presentations tonight, and during the school year, you know, we normally recognize our scholars at this time, but we'll suspend the student recognitions until September, when our students are back in class and doing great things once again. This evening, we will recognize our staff and our partners who have supported the district, our schools, students, and families. Dr. Green and Mr. Heil, if you would come forward and join me at the podium to thank our guests tonight for their contributions to our district. As you know, Lincoln College Prep was officially entered into the National Register of Historic Places on January 15, 2014. The school was built nearly 87 years ago. For many years, the Castle on the Hill, as it is known, served as the primary high school for African-American students in the central region of the city. The campus has seen several additions and improvements during its lifespan, including a full renovation of its auditorium in the summer of 2013. As a result of the listing, the campus is now eligible to receive federal grants and tax credits for rehabilitation. Joining us tonight is Brad Wolf. If he would come forward, he is with the Landmarks Commission of Kansas City to present a certificate from the state of Missouri. Brad?
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It is my honor to be here to present this official certificate of the listing on the National Register. This has been a long time coming. I've had alumni working with me for many years. We formally listed on the list a number of years ago. And recently, we hired Elizabeth Rosen, who's in the audience, to actually prepare the nomination. And also in the audience is Joe Louis Maddox. He's a member of our local Historic Preservation Commission, and he's been working to actually have this property listed for many years also. And actually, he'll be doing a presentation here on June 14 at the Blueford Branch, giving an overview of the significance of Lincoln High School, so I encourage you all to attend that also. But for today, I'd like to present this formal certificate, recognizing its significance on the National Register of Historic Places. It was formally listed on January 15, 2014. The certificate's signed by Governor Nixon, Secretary of State Jason Kander, and State Historic Preservation Officer Sarah Polly. Congratulations and thank you very much.
It would be nearly impossible to serve our students and families the way we have this year without the help of a number of volunteers and agencies in our community, so tonight we would like to recognize just a few of our community champions, as we call them, and thank them for their commitment to our students this school year. Karen Grover, who is our Coordinator of Partners in Education and our volunteer program, is here to recognize them. Karen?
Tonight, we get to recognize several formal partners, partners who have sat down with us and have recognized that together, we serve the children better. The first award we'd like to give as a community champion is for the medical school up on Independence Avenue, the program Score One for Health. We have 13 schools, 13 elementary schools, that all of the students have then opportunity for health screening, including dental, vision, follow-up vouchers, and care afterwards. This last year alone, 3,787 students were served. We had nearly an 80 percent participation rate across the district. 18.9 percent were referred on for vision, follow-up. Oh, I realize I have some... On the keyboard. Mm-hmm. That seems to do the same thing. But my friend here will help me. 24 percent were referred on for dental follow-up, and 38 percent of our students were found to have a high body mass index, which is something that we can begin to look at as a district, as a whole. At this time, while we're working on this, I'd like the director of Score One for Health to come up, Annette Campbell. Caring for Kids Kansas City is a newly formed, maybe about a year, two years old, nonprofit organization that facilitates the development of church and business partnerships with schools. Caring for Kids believes that caring community partnerships increase the capacity of schools to provide children with skills and encouragement that they need for a hopeful future. When we sat down with Caring for Kids, we looked at three schools that didn't have a strong church partnership, Pitcher, Trailwoods, and Rogers. And the executive director of Caring for Kids, Mr. Gary Schmitz, who has been a long friend of the Kansas City District and worked with us on many things, said, "Yes, we'd like that challenge." And at this time, I'd like Gary Schmitz to come up. After starting with three schools, we're looking at adding three more schools sometime this summer. And the very cool... Stay, Gary. The very cool thing about partnerships is our partners have friends. And Gary was able to bring more congregations to work with the schools. At this time, I'd like to have Sheffield Family Life Center Pastor Murillo, could you come up? Sheffield Family Life Center has partnered with Trailwoods Schools and has already donated, within like three days of the partnership, had donated a brand-new washer and dryer because the school had asked for a washer, because kids have accidents and they wanted to be able to take care of it right away, so that the kids could go back to their classrooms Also here, I'd like to introduce John Chisholm with the Forerunner Christian Fellowship. While they're posing, I'd just like to share that the Forerunner Christian Church gave an unprecedented donation as soon as they heard the story of the schools, the three schools that were adopted, that there was a need for school uniforms. And they donated 5,000 student uniform pieces, socks, underwear, polo shirts, uniform pants. In addition, not only the three schools, but there were enough of a donation that PAM and the... with the parent university was able to have items for the family store. The Students in Transition, in addition, was able to be helped. So I want to thank both of you for being here tonight. We also want to recognize some other partners that aren't here, that are part of Caring for Kids, and that is Victory Temple, who's partnering with Rogers Elementary School and recruiting volunteer mentors and tutors. Grace Way has partnered with Pitcher and also donated a washing machine. They're recruiting volunteers to service tutors, and they're building a clothing closet. So I'd like to thank Caring for Kids and all the Caring for Kids partners. Many of you have heard about Turn the Page KC. Turn the Page KC is a newly formed, not-for-profit organization that's dedicated to promoting reading proficiency among third graders in the Kansas City, Missouri-area school districts. And they believe in collective community action. What you may not know is what they're doing in our school district. We were able, for the last two years, to have three full-time Vista volunteers assigned to five different Kansas City public schools, Garcia, Garfield, Whittier, Page, and Banneker, to build the capacity of the schools to support volunteer readers. Another thing that Turn the Page KC does is they are interested in measuring the success of all the various programs that are doing literacy programs in Kansas City, in particular, the out-of-school educational providers. They have worked out data-sharing agreements with all the different partners, so that we can begin to see what kind of success the different programs have. They are also promoting school attendance, and we've been beginning conversation about providing an introductory training for volunteer readers in our district. At this time, I'd like Mike English to step up, who is the executive director of Turn the Page KC. Truman Medical Center Behavioral Health has been a longtime partner with the Office of Student Interventions under Dr. Cordoba's leadership. We are beginning or continuing a partnership to conduct trauma-sensitive assessments and training with Kansas City public school staff. Truman Behavioral Health serves as a consultant to the district and provides recommendations and overall support. Truman Behavioral Health is working on, I think it's three, is it three different schools, pilot schools? Two pilot schools, so that the entire school can become a trauma-sensitive environment. With us from Truman Medical Center, we have Marcia Morgan, who is the COO of Behavioral Health, and Molly Tickner and Beth Sarner. Could you please step up? Also partnering with the Kansas City Public School Office of Student Interventions is the Kansas City Municipal Court Truancy Court. This is a court that provides some teeth into the attendance, the truancy measure for the city of Kansas City. Abby Mueller, Assistant City Prosecutor, could you step forward? Our last presentation, and I don't think we have anyone from the YMCA here, unless they snuck in, but I'd just like to share, the YMCA has three formal partnerships with Kansas City Public Schools. One with Central Academy for after-school programs through the Linwood Y, another through Melcher Elementary School incentive programs, and the YMCA is also doing a literacy camp for rising kindergarten and first graders at Page Elementary, and this is the second year. And why it's so nice over at Page is that we get to have swimming lessons there as well, so all except on their behalf. And that is the end of our community champions for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and again, thanks to all of our community partners. Each month, we recognize employees who go above and beyond to make a difference in Kansas City Public Schools, and the honorees can be nominated by colleagues, parents, or community members. And tonight, we recognize a classified terrific teammate from the IT Department, Chee Dee in Wachau, and the nomination reads as follows. During our one-to-one rollout at James Elementary in Carver Dual Language, Chee Dee stayed until late into the evening on several occasions to make sure the computers were ready for teachers and students. He never complained, was always upbeat. His caring attitude and joy of seeing children excited and ready to learn was clear and moving. Even though Chee Dee has been with the district just a short time, his skills, his can-do spirit, and dedication should be recognized. Chee Dee, if you'd come forward, please, and be recognized by our board and superintendent. Congratulations, and thank you for being part of the KCPS team. Website editors, who are staff members at schools, are the driving force behind every KCPS school website. They are writers and photographers on the front lines, responsible for receiving building news and communicating it to the public via their website. If you Google any one of our schools, you will likely read content produced by one of these dedicated staff members. In February, the Public Relations and Marketing Department scored our school websites for our annual .org awards. During this competition, all school websites are judged in the areas of school news, content on their pages, calendar events, and photography. Tonight, we are recognizing the website editors who scored the highest during the competition. The following two schools earned a perfect score, 90 out of 90 points. Crispus Attucks Elementary, editor Elizabeth Rash. If Crispus Attucks is here? And our other school earning a perfect score, Benjamin Banneker, editor Deborah Stringfield. I know I saw Dr. Baxter here. She's the principal at Benjamin Banneker, if she would stand. And also, I don't know if Principal Jessica Bassett is here, from Attucks. Congratulations. Our Merit Award winners this year are Melcher, Brenda Sartain. Is Melcher here? Congratulations. Dr. Green's coming back down. We have two more of these. Sorry, Dr. Green. Principal of Melcher is Ann Wallace. Passao, John Russell. Principal Dr. Dennis Walker, Passao Academy. And FLA, I'm not sure if Anka Hurstacorn is here, Principal Joel Ramsdale. All of those were our Merit Award winners for this year. These people put on some great stories and photos on the website. It helps us to better tell our story in Kansas City public schools, so thank you so much, and give them another round of applause for their work. Just as we wrap up tonight, we want to recognize the class of 2014. The total amount of scholarships and grant money offered to our students was $20.6 million. The Missouri Advising Corps... Go ahead. The Missouri College Advising Corps does not count A-plus, Pell, Bright Flight, or other grant money, so the actual total could be much higher. But a fun fact, $7,970,497 of the total 26, $20.6 million, was earned by the 18 students that graduated from the Early College Academy Program, so we are very proud of them. This class will attend college, 92 different colleges. You can see our map. Can you switch over to the map? 92 different colleges, technical institutes, and military academies in 24 states, plus Paris and Rome. So we'd like to say congratulations to the class of 2014. We are proud of their accomplishments and the opportunity to share this information with you, the board, and the public this evening. I know it was a little long tonight, and I apologize, but we honored some great people tonight, and we want to take the time to do that, and we will be back, I promise, in September with more champions, more scholars, and more terrific teammates to recognize. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again to all of our honorees. Before we move on to public comment, Mr. Evans, I understand you have a recognition of your own you would like to make on behalf of the board.
I know that I wasn't asked to come to this podium, but I decided to come anyway, because the young lady that we're going to recognize should have a picture with Dr. Green and Mr. Heil also. The Board of Directors would like to recognize Ms. Latonya Shepherd, Administrative Assistant to Department of School Leadership, for her expert coordination involving the Board Directors during our seventh recent graduation ceremonies. She did this job with extreme professionalism, and her attention to detail was noticed by all members. Thank you for your excellent service on behalf of the Kansas City Board of Directors. And Board members, if you would like to say something on behalf of what we received at the graduation ceremonies, please do so. And I can't say enough about Dr. Sanders for helping coordinate some of the excellent food that we had. And when I say excellent food, I do mean that. Our first graduation, we had wraps, which I'm not a fan of, and I didn't eat not one, by the way. So I said, "Dr. Sanders, could you do something different?" And something different she did, and I'm telling you, the next six graduations, we had a spread that was second to none, which included, I mean, some of the finest food that I think I've had in a long time.
Mr. Evans, we are here to honor an employee and discuss the menu.
I thought that's what I was doing, in conjunction with both of them, so thank you. But Ms. Shepherd, would you please come to the podium, please? The thing that I liked about what she did was she was taking orders from, it seemed like everybody in the graduation ceremony, and not once did I see any frowns on her face, or "I don't want to do this," no sweat or anything. I mean, congratulations to a beautiful young lady. So if you guys would like to say something on behalf, please do so at this time.
We can go around the table briefly.
I want to thank you for your efficiency and just the kind manner by which you treated us.
Thank you so much. You made it very easy for a new board member.
Just a wonderful personality, and everything you do is with a smile. I appreciate it.
I would echo those sentiments, that you were tremendous to work with. Thank you.
I wasn't able to attend graduation this year, but from last year, this woman does an amazing job, and if she ever leaves us, I'm sure she'll find a big Hollywood star to pay her for that, because she's that great.
Thank you for keeping us on task and doing it with such grace.
We have now come to the part of the business meeting in which we welcome comments from the public. We have five speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Jameka Kendricks. Ms. Kendricks, you have three minutes.
All right. My name is Jameka Kendricks. Speaking on communication, it's an issue that parents, community, and staff have brought before KCPS administrators and the board multiple times. While there has been some improvement, it continues to be an area of weakness that contributes to a negative customer experience and a lack of investment, commitment, and ownership among stakeholders. Recent concerns with notification about summer school offerings and enrollment, one-to-one insurance, and end-of-school surveys have highlighted the administration's failure to comply with Board Policies 4.1.7 and 4.2, which are listed on the handout. Regarding summer school and...
Thank you for keeping us on task and doing it with such grace.
Thank you again. We have now come to the part of the business meeting in which we welcome comments from the public. We have five speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Jameka Kendricks. Ms. Kendricks, you have three minutes.
All right. My name is Jameka Kendricks. Speaking on communication, it's an issue that parents, community, and staff have brought before KCPS administrators and the board multiple times. While there has been some improvement, it continues to be an area of weakness that contributes to a negative customer experience and a lack of investment, commitment, and ownership among stakeholders. Recent concerns with notification about summer school offerings and enrollment, one-to-one insurance, and end-of-school surveys have highlighted the administration's failure to comply with Board Policy 4.1.7 and 4.2, which are listed on the handout. Regarding summer school and the one-to-one insurance, the district failed to communicate with KCPS families in a manner that systematically and accurately informed them about what was occurring in KCPS and their respective schools. Summer school information was not disseminated systematically. Some parents received phone blasts, others received a flyer in the mail in early May listing a application deadline of April 28th. Some received a flyer from school during the last week of school, and then others, like me, received an email. This year also, the summer school option was expanded to include all students, not just those with the greatest need. However, due to a failure to communicate, a number of parents were unaware of this change, and had already enrolled their children in alternate summer school programs before they found out at the end of the year. This year, the district is also offering themed summer school options at different schools. Several parents have expressed frustration with the summer school application process as their children have not been placed in the summer school programs for which the parents applied, but in other programs that the district deemed appropriate for those students. In some cases, older and younger siblings, who normally attend school together, are being bused to summer schools at different sites. With regard to one-to-one insurance, last month, a district representative addressed the DAC requesting assistance raising funds to cover insurance costs for low-income families, the concern being that families were unaware of the need for or cost of insurance and would therefore be unprepared to cover the expense when students return in the fall. There's confusion surrounding the fee as well. Parents we spoke to who were informed of the fee identified a fee range from $40 to $65 annually. With regard to survey notice, that would be a violation of Board Policy 4.2. I'm not reading them because you have them. And in this case, the policy does not clearly define what disorganized is, and I believe that persistent untimely communication can contribute to disorganized work environment. Last Wednesday, teachers were informed of at least three surveys that needed to be administered or completed before the end of the school year. They were informed on Wednesday this needed to be completed by Friday. Considering the other tasks that teachers are expected to complete at the end of the year, this untimely communication also contributed to an unfair, or created an unfair burden as well. To ensure compliance with Board Policy, I ask that you consider making a request of the administration to include a plan with expected outcomes and measures for timely, systematic, and accurate communication at the district, or for district and school-level initiatives when initiatives are introduced to the board. One more sentence. And that you begin working with KCAFTSRP to amend Board Policy 4.2 to include limitations for timely communication to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Lisa Henry Bowen. You have three minutes, Ms. Bowen.
I'll pass out my handouts as soon as I'm completed. Ladies and gentlemen of the Kansas City, Missouri School Board, I'm here tonight as a parent to discuss a situation that has angered me and given me pause as to the true agenda of this Kansas City, Missouri school district. Approximately two weeks ago, prior to the MAP test, I indicated to central officials and Ms. Blancardi of the Virtual Instruction Program that I was going to opt my son out of the MAP testing cycle, as he was not doing well with virtual instruction, and I did not want MAP testing scores this cycle to be used in a prejudicial manner towards him as they were when we applied to Lincoln College Prep. The week of the MAP test, Mona Price of Central High School called to tell me my son needed to take the MAP test. I informed her that I already had a call-in to the Missouri Department of Education requesting a hearing and opt-out for this testing cycle. I explained to Ms. Price that I'm not against testing, but due to my son's poor performance in virtual school, he would not do well on the MAP, and I did not want these scores used in a prejudicial manner against him when applying for a different KCMSD district school in the future. I further asked Ms. Price for the laws, statutes, code, and KCMSD policies that compelled me to force my son to take the MAP test. She could not provide me the information as I requested, so I asked that she contact her supervisor, as that person might have the information. On May 13, 2014, at 7:50 a.m., I received a voicemail call from Mr. Pete Monks, Director of Assessment and Accountability. In his message, Mr. Monks informed me that he, quote, "understood I was refusing to have my son take the MAP test." He further indicated that we, quote, "needed to talk," and that if he didn't hear from me, he would, quote, "have to turn my name over to the state." I immediately called Ms. Vicky Murillo. As this was entirely unprofessional, I explained the entire story and my reasoning to Dr. Murillo. She was very courteous, and she was very professional and talked to me like a human being. I further told Dr. Murillo that I spoke with Dr. Bill, with Mr. Bill Gerling of Missouri's Department of Education, and he indicated there was nothing the state could do with any, quote, "names that were turned over." Mr. Gerling forwarded me a copy of the laws regarding assessment testing. Interestingly, the laws I read...
Test. You will pause it, yes.
Shall I go now? Okay. Interestingly, the laws I read did not mention the MAP test specifically, however, it does mention, quote, "yearly assessment." The laws further do not mention any specific retribution towards parents who opt-out on behalf of their children. Mr. Monks should never be allowed to contact parents regarding this matter. He has neither the professionalism nor the class to deliver a message that a parent would deem as reasonable. Furthermore, Mr. Monks needs to be trained on the historical implications of telling a black mother that she will, quote, "be turned over to the state" if she doesn't force her child to participate in MAP testing. I would think that a so-called professional in this profession, in this position, should know that historical degradation of black parents have suffered at the hands of state agencies and municipalities, the history of black parents being separated from their children. This should never be said. I have copies for you all to read of my full and entire presentation.
Please provide those to Ms. Eileen Houston Stewart. Next to speak, we have the Reverend John Spicer. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Father John Spicer from St. Andrews Episcopal Church in Brookside, and also from the Southwest Early College Campus Faith-Based Coalition. Since 2010, our group of faith communities has followed a clear mission to support the students and faculty and staff of Southwest. Our members have tutored kids, helped teachers, fed athletes, attended sports games, painted hallways, honored staff. The Coalition has skin in the game, supporting those who are doing the heavy lifting of helping kids learn. One of those who's been doing the heaviest lifting has been Southwest Principal, Dr. Ed Richardson. Since arriving in 2011 and inheriting a deeply conflicted school, Dr. Richardson has improved the quality of education there. Against incredible odds, he brought greater security and stability to a volatile school, reversing a chaotic trend there. His strong, yet pastoral presence gave him credibility with students. He excelled in developing relationships with the community, including our coalition. Under his leadership, the school became safer and test scores improved. Consistently, he has been a healing presence for Southwest. Well, since the 1st of April, when two Southwest students sexually assaulted another student, Dr. Richardson and several teachers had been on administrative leave. While the Coalition appreciates the need for a thorough investigation, the long administrative leave functionally places the burden of proof on Dr. Richardson and the teachers to explain why they are not responsible for the assault. Not only has the long, silent investigation shifted the presumption to guilty, it's done so at the worst possible time. Dr. Richardson and the teachers now find themselves in a summer of limbo, unsure about their futures with the district, and shadowed by a cloud of ugly assumptions if they seek positions elsewhere. They deserve to see this investigation end. Finally, the Coalition is concerned about the district's temptation in this case, and I use that term intentionally. As people of faith, we are all too aware of the propensity towards sin that human beings and human institutions share. In this case, I urge the district not to succumb to the worst demons of our nature by making Dr. Richardson and the teachers into scapegoats for the district's failure to provide adequate security for its students. When incidents earlier this school year compromised student safety at Southwest, Dr. Richardson asked several times to have additional security measures put in place. The district did not see fit to do so until after the assaults in early April. I understand the logic that the building principal is the captain of the ship, but the district bears responsibility when the captain's requests for supplies and support and personnel go unanswered.
Our next speaker is John Mark Clifton. Mr. Clifton, you have three minutes.
I'm the pastor of the Warno Road Baptist Church, and I agree with everything my dear friend and colleague, Father Spicer, has just said. We too, as part of the Faith-Based Coalition, have major skin in this game. Our church has fed the football team before every game and after every game for three years. I don't think we've missed a home or an away game. We provide food for the basketball team, soccer, the football, the track team. We even provided uniforms for the track team, cleats for the football team. We are there. We love those kids, even provide some coaches for the cheerleaders. And we care about you, and we realize the difficult job you have. And you need to know that we pray for you, and we're supporters and champions of you, and we want to be part of the solution at Southwest. We deeply want to. But with that said, I want to address, to some degree, the folly of the district placing so many children in a building that is so difficult to keep safe in today's world. The decision to place children and staff at risk by placing 7th through 12th graders in that building, which was totally unprepared at the time in a safety standpoint, was not made by the teachers or administrators that had been placed on leave, but was indeed made by people in this very building. I'm not a paid educator. I'm not a professional with a master's degree in education. But I see every time I walk in that building, it is not appropriately safe. There are unused rooms. There are vacant stairways. There are closed hallways, and there's a tremendous lack of video surveillance. If the district was intent on placing hundreds of 7th through 12th graders in that building, then it's the district's responsibility to ensure the building was retrofitted to the greatest degree possible, complete with working security cameras. As highly engaged citizens who are passionate about our children, we will not rest until we have answers to the basic questions. Why were these children placed in a building that is unsafe, and why were not more steps taken quicker to make it more secure? As Father Spicer has shared, the administration did ask for additional security measures to be taken. I know there's not one of you in this room, not one of you around this table, that doesn't love children with all of your heart and would do anything you could do to protect them. I don't question that at all. But there's some systemic problems that are making it unsafe for our children. After the most recent sexual assault of a 14-year-old autistic girl, our church held a prayer vigil for her the day after her family reached out to us and asked us for help. I only wish the response of the school district to the counseling needs of that 14-year-old victim was as swift as your decision to remove Dr. Richardson and other teachers. I know there's a lot I don't know. I know there's many circumstances I'm not privy to. But I do know this, that when that young girl and her mother came to us on Tuesday after the event happened the previous week, the counselor we provided was the first counselor that that child had seen. Again, I know there are systems and things in place that I'm not aware of, and I'm not trying to be accusatory, but I would like to know, after a 14-year-old autistic girl was assaulted in the school, why there weren't counselors on her front porch that next day?
Sir, your time's up.
On a final note, this reveals a deeper problem than security cameras. I understand that. It is a moral failure in our city, and as faith-based leaders, we need to own that. And so, we want to recommit ourselves to working with you to solve these problems together, and we hope you'll consider, continue to consider us as friends and allies in this battle that we all must win. Thank you.
Speaking next, Mr. Tom Love.
It's kind of hard to follow that. But I want to talk about summer school. I want to thank the district for providing summer school. Is it 6,000 that's already signed up? It's pretty incredible. I'm very proud of Dr. Green and the board and all these people sitting over here for all the changes that's been made in the district. There's been just a tremendous turnaround. There's a lot, a lot left to do, and I would appreciate the board giving Dr. Green all their support they can for changes that need to be made. Whenever there's a change made, it causes problems. People get upset. And one of the changes I'd really like to see is a summer school that would be more of a mandatory thing for first and second graders, something that would require them to attend because they're not reading on grade level. Currently, the state has a law, it's called Senate Bill 319, which we had 119 students last year that were fourth grade level, fourth graders, and they were two years behind. That law doesn't kick in until the end of third grade, and I mean, actually, it starts in fourth grade. And I would like to see us step up and help and intervene in earlier. There's another law that I passed out to all the board members and the administration about four months ago that allows funding for summer school that's designed to address deficiencies of a student. And so, I'd like to give you an example that the district has already implemented this year at Satchel Page, where Dr. Sanders had invited the reading specialist there to come in. And that's funded by a YMCA grant, from what I've read on the internet site, which I thought was really impressive. They're going to provide certified, I guess, hopefully, the certified reading specialist and assistance to rising first and second graders there. It's kind of a trial balloon, I guess. But that would be an example of funding that we could receive for that two and a half hours of reading intervention. So, I'd like the district to take a look at that. The other thing that I'd like to mention, again, is that the kindergartners and these, I don't know what you call them, slot kids, that were these August, September children that really weren't supposed to start school yet. There's 1/6 of the students. And that's really caused a tremendous amount of problems for the kids who weren't ready to start. There's a stigma to repeating kindergarten. Maybe if the child is not capable, and we have all these students entering kindergarten summer school that we're going to have this year, which is incredible, maybe we could test them. Be sure to test all, we're going to anyway. And if they're not ready for advanced kindergarten, maybe we could have a beginning kindergarten class. It'd still be funded by the state, and those children that aren't quite ready, that are premature, born premature, their summer birthdays, it's not their fault what month they're born in, but it is our responsibility to make sure they succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening for coming to share your thoughts and passions with us. With that, we will turn it over to Dr. Green for the superintendent's report.
As we do with most business reports, business meetings, we will begin with a budget report, just outlining the revenue and expense. A snapshot of that will be given by our CFO, Mr. Tunis.
While we are waiting, I will remind you that we do have this handy-dandy message cube up here. If members of the audience would like to text a question, there's a good possibility that I might read it. Number's 816-269-2935. Again, that's 816-269-2935. Thank you.
Mr. Heil, members of the board, again, this is our monthly revenue and expense report to give the board... To give the board a brief overview, 83% of the fiscal year has passed. Our revenue collections are right on target, right where we want them to be. If the document shows that we have received 99.6% of our local tax receipts, which is that major source of income that we monitor very closely, and our expenses are very comparable to what they've been in the past. During the last board meeting, we discussed when our revenue exceeds our expenses and then how that number in yellow continues to get smaller and smaller each month, well, it's doing exactly what it's scheduled to do, which unfortunately is getting smaller and smaller. It will turn into a negative number, but then turns positive when our local collections start again back in December and January. So, I'm very pleased to report to the board that all things are progressing as scheduled in both our revenue as well as our expenses, and we anticipate completing the year in the black and look forward to a balanced budget again for 2015. With that, I'll answer any questions the board may have.
I'll offer one round of questions, starting with Mr. Evans. Do you have questions? Dr. Hartsfield? Ms. Manzer? Mr. Rogers? Ms. Montero? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you.
As always, we give a snapshot of where we are, not only just budgetarily, but also academically. And as we are at a stage now in the course of the year where we begin to get data from the assessments that we gave to students in early May, late April, and at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Vicky Murillo to come to the mic, and she will give the board a snapshot of where we are with our end-of-course assessments, the EOC assessments that were given earlier this spring. Keep in mind, this is a snapshot. This is not the complete picture. We still have a lot more data that we will get over the course of the summer from DESI as to where we are, but this is an indication of where we are at this time of the year. Dr. Murillo, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and good evening, Board Chair and Board members. I am pretty pleased with the progress that we've made, and I hope that you will share the excitement that we have with the end-of-course assessments. We'll begin by using the same graph and meter that we used before. And I wanted to begin, since we have new board members, with our definitions, so I can kind of give you a few of the definitions before we get into the presentation. MSEP V measures five standards: the academic achievement, our subgroups, our college career readiness, attendance, and graduation rate. At this time, we have received the scores back for academic achievement and subgroup for our high schools. So, that is what I'll be presenting on tonight. We're getting very close. We have one part of the college and career readiness file certified, and that's our college placement. We have achieved the points that we had targeted. We are waiting for the scores to come back for the IB and the AP and the dual credit. And then, we're also verifying and certifying our graduates, so we can begin the grad rate, and then we will also go through the ACT scores. By the end of the, probably June 10th, I'll have the attendance certified, and then we will be moving into pulling together a pretty good number on where we'll be in the APR. So, as we begin, I'll go through the format for you first. To the far left, we have the key performance indicators. Then, we have our board policy. Then, we have our SMART goal. This year, our target for ELA was 303.7. Our ELA 9 came back at 318.4. Our ELA 10 came back with an MPI, which is the MAP Performance Index. That is where we add up the number of students we have in below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced award points to the number of students in each column that gives you a performance index. In ELA 9, six of the seven high schools increased their MPI. In ELA 10, all high schools increased their MPI. We also tested more students this year in English 10 than we did last year. We are very encouraged by the work that was done in our high schools, and we celebrate, we do. We celebrate the work, the work of our teachers. We celebrate the work of our administration, and we celebrate the work, especially in our C and I department, and really getting around that literacy focus. As you know, we had a literacy plan that we began this year, and we drove that plan. And Dr. Green, under his leadership, really commissioned us. We left all the points on the table last year. We decided this year, we were not leaving those points on the table and coming up with zero. The last piece that I have been watching, and Mr. West had really quizzed me on, is the unaccredited schools. Those are the schools in my war room, if you go up to my war room, is in yellow. And all four of our high schools that are unaccredited made growth in ELA. So, we're very, very positive, and I've got that laid out for you one more time towards the end. In mathematics, our key performance indicators, again, were on target. And I guess I should have went back to ELA, and you might ask me, if we're at 318 and 344, why am I just saying on target? As Al Tunis would always push me to push the meter a little farther and say exceeding. But remember, this is high school. I still have to add in the 38, and those scores come back at the end of July. So, we now, at the state, measures us for grades 3 through 11. We no longer are measured by 36, 78, and then 9, 10, 11. So, we are now, all scores go together. So, these are why we're calling these preliminary, because this is just our high school scores. But the scores have come back better this year than the high school scores did last year. So, we're very pleased with the growth that we've made. In our mathematics, our algebra came back at 299.8. It was a point two away from being a 300 or higher, which was the goal. Our MPI was 301, so we're very, very close. Our geometry came back at 331.3. So, we're very pleased with that. Six of the seven high schools increased their MPI in both subject areas. So, it was very encouraging. The most encouraging point that I hound dogged all year was those unaccredited buildings, and all four of them showed growth in their MPI. So, we're very pleased with that. As we look at biology, biology is about 28% of the total points come out of the high school. We still have 5th grade and 8th grade to add into biology. We had an MPI goal of 274.4. Our high school biology scores came back at 282.2. Five of the high schools maintained their MPI or showed an increase. The number of students that took the state assessment increased by almost 140 in biology this year. So, that was another significant amount of students that took the assessment, and we still maintain and are continuing to show growth. This content did not make the significant growth I was looking for, that we, the academic team, was looking for in Dr. Green. It will be a focus for next year. Our goal was to see every content area up in the 290s. They made growth, which we're very pleased with growth. But remember, we want to set our expectations high. We want off-the-floor-and-up-above status. So, that's why we're really looking at NWEA next year. As you know, under Acuity, we only had one assessment that really gave us some feedback on science, and that was Acuity C. In NWEA, we have three assessments, so we can monitor them every, all year long at three different periods to see how we're doing in science, and that will really help us in this area, make sure that we're monitoring and that we're making improvements. In government, in this course right here, this is the only assessment given for social studies. So, as you can see, our goal was 284. Our government scores came back at 284.3. Five schools increased their MPI. The academic points received for this content was six. The subgroup achievement points for this was 1.5. We hit exactly where we said we would hit, and this is now sealed. So, we have those points. So, we are complete in the government area. So, I thought, what would that look like if we laid out the high schools so that you could begin to see the trend line that I've been following since 2012? As you look at this chart, I'll walk you through it real quickly. To the far left, you see right here that we have the schools, the seven high schools. Next to it, that is the 2013 APR, the Adequate Progress Report. Under that is the status that those schools received last year. The four unaccredited schools that I were talking about was listed there. We have East and Paseo are provisional, and then Lincoln is accredited. This was the MPI scores I reported out to you by building, so you can see where those are. And then, this is the trend line that we're following. As you see, the MPI for 2012, then you see the MPI line for 2013, and then the last one, of course, is SY14, the EOC MPIs that came back. The last column represents the goals. As you remember, when we began our school year, we created a goal for each individual school. And a goal was a goal that we believed that school could meet. Some of them were set a little high, the bar was, but we believed that the expectation was there and the support given, they could reach those. The far left shows you, did they meet the goals? And as you can see, in ELA, all schools rose to the occasion and met their goals. All schools made progress in ELA. So, we could take like one, as you look at, if you take AC Prep, and we know that they came back into the district in 2012. They began at 274.6 for their first year. This year, three, after two years, they have reached 334.7. We're very pleased with the growth that they've made there at AC Prep. Also, if you come down, East was one that we were very proud of last year. They were at 274. In 2013 last year, they went to 288. And Mr. Herrera and his team and his staff have moved the building to 348.1. We're very pleased with the work that's going on in the high schools that the principals and the teachers are driving. I did the same for you in mathematics. So, you can see, again, the schools, the chart is laid out the same. So, you have the schools to the far left, their 2013 APR status, their algebra scores, their MPI, their geometry MPIs, and then you can, again, I wanted you to follow a trend line to see how they've done over the past three years. So, when I began in 2012, then we went to 2013, that's when we began MSEP V, and then 2014. You again can see, what were their goals in blue that the district set for them? Did they meet those goals? And was progress made? And you can follow each one of the buildings. This time, I'll take you through Paseo. In 2012, they went to 222, 227.8. In 2013, they increased to 236.9, and this year, they're at 272.5. So, each year, moving in the right direction and continuing to see that growth. We're very pleased with that. So, one of the questions many want to know is, where do we lie in the point system? Again, I want to remind you, these are preliminary. These are for the high school. The state, Walt Brown, who will work me because he did assessment in Lee Summit, he will say to me constantly that elementary cannot get you accreditation, but high school will keep you from it. And we want to make sure that our high schools are on track. And again, at this time last year, by the end of June, Dr. Green, with the support of my team, really helped us figure out exactly where we were going to land, and we were pretty spot on. So, we'll know pretty quickly how we're doing with all of them. But I'll give you a snapshot of what this looks like. So, I'll have to walk you through one more chart, so put your thinking cap on with me one more time. On the far left, remember, in MSEP V, there's five standards: academic achievement and subgroup. Those are the only two I'm going to focus on right now and not give you a snapshot of any of the others. In the academic achievement, ELA, mathematics, science, and social studies. The possible points that the state would award for each one of these subgroup categories and contents: 16 points for ELA, 16 points for math, 16 for science, and eight for social studies. The next column represents the points that Kansas City Public Schools earned in 2013. ELA, the zero, has haunted us for a year. In math, six points. In science, 12. In social studies, six. In SY13, our EOC MPI projections or our targets that we set up was 290, I'm sorry, the MPI that we earned for 2013 was 293.5 for ELA, 292.9 for mathematics, 271 for science, and 275.3 for social studies. As you will see, for this year, the preliminary with our high schools, we have earned 335.9. We have earned 308 in mathematics. We have earned 289 for science and 284.3 for social studies. So, we have a significant increase, especially in the area of ELA. So, the scores needed to award points, this is how the state looks at and sets this criteria up for every district. For our district to earn points, in some way, I got past academics, there we go. And for our districts to earn the points for the ELA, we set the score, remember, the SMART goal was 303.7. But if you go back to the left, you have a 335.9. That moves us up to 312.5, which would in turn give us 16 points for ELA this year. Real good increase. We should be very proud of the work. If you come back to mathematics, we set the preliminary at 308. We had a goal of 301, if you remember our SMART goal. We did not reach the next level of 322.5, but we will reach the 301, which will give us 12 points for mathematics. When you come down to science, the 289 for the preliminary high school puts us above the 274, which again will award us the 12 points for high school. And the 284 for social studies that we have locked in, that score will not change. We have hit those numbers. Will give us the six points, which at the top here, where you see a targeted APR, that is what we came up with for a target this year. If you drop down to the bottom, that 46 points represents where we are currently. So, we're very pleased with what the results we've gotten back from our high schools. And you know, as I always say, as our achievement goes, so goes our subgroup, because our subgroup is 97% of our district we targeted. So, I won't walk you through the chart again because of time. We targeted 9.5, but because of the growth that we saw in ELA, we are at 10.5. So, we have increased the number of points. If you remember, last year, we received 24 points for our academic. At this time, we're setting with the preliminary high school at 46, so that we've more than doubled in our academics. So, we should be very pleased with the work. So, I know I've given you a quick snapshot. I can take questions, or we can move on.
Let's go ahead and open up for a round of questions. Mr. Evans, can we start with you, please? Dr. Hartsfield?
It's impressive to see that the progress we've made. Just one question, though. When we're looking at for accreditation, is it still the three-years cumulative average that we're looking at, not per year?
That is correct. That's why, one thing, when I started at the beginning about status, if you see where the line is, it says status, and let me get up to achievement here. And when we get to the 312, even though I'm looking at 335.9, many would assume the district would automatically get status points. That's where districts are awarded immediately nine points. Then, the other points come from progress. It is based on a rolling average. So, we would average in SY12 with SY13, then you average SY13 with SY14, and then they award us the points and give us our MPI off of the gains that are made from the two. Yes. So, that's why we will have to maintain above a 312 to receive the full 16 points.
Thank you.
Ms. Manzer?
So, what do you attribute this sudden and amazing growth? Is it something that you're doing differently in professional development? Is it in teacher preparation, or coaching, or teacher hiring?
I think Dr. Green's going to speak to that.
Well, it's a variety of things. We have further refined the system of monitoring and support and measurement that we put in place last year. We took it to another level. We have engaged with, again, school leadership under Dr. Sanders, with Louis Gallant in curriculum instruction and professional development. That academic team with Dr. Murillo has worked very closely with our building leadership, with teachers, to further refine our efforts to, as you've heard me refer, to an academic stethoscope on every child. And we know where they are throughout the year and what they need and how to intervene. We've gotten better at intervention, faster at intervention, and so, the technology has helped us a great deal. But above all else, you know, we have made this a priority. Everyone understands the expectation and the role, and then, we've gone about the business of delivery. And we think that we're well on course to show some pretty good numbers, even beyond these, as we go forward.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Dr. Murillo, first of all, congratulations on receiving your recent doctorate degree. Dr. Morello, first of all, congratulations on receiving your recent doctorate degree.
Thank you.
I commend you for that.
Thank you.
The question I have is the same one I usually ask. Are we still on target to receive points for full accreditation?
Yes. I want, I want to caution the board that these are the preliminary, because remember, these are high school. But high school really came in strong last year, and we just maintained with the seven through eight. I'm a little concerned, like, we talked about seventh and eighth grade math. I'll be transparent with Dr. Green, he probably looks at me and goes, okay, okay, Morello, give it a rest. But I watch it, and I worry, and I follow it. But I can tell you, our CCRs were strong. Our attendance were strong. And the graduation rate, we're starting to count, we're counting those beans as Al would count. Every student, we got them all coded and coded correctly today. It was done at 12:27, I can tell you the time that I checked it off. So we are, we will be counting, and by the end of June, I'll be able to pretty much lay out everything for Dr. Green, except for the 38 MAP scores. And that's where we'll be at.
Mr. West, Ms. Montero.
In regards to, is it special, special education, or ELL, or is it for any, I thought it was, if I was reading correctly, for MSET 5? There was a certain percentage, the district is allowed to apply for, for the certain amount, percentage to opt out. And my question is, there's, the maximum is 20%?
No.
What is it again?
MAP A is 10%.
Okay, the 10%.
Yes.
Did, are we allowed to do that this year again, and opt out the 10% again? But you're opting out different children this year?
No. The 10% that we're talking about opting out, they really don't opt out, it's only 10% can take the MAP A assessment, which they're given a lot of support, and recording's done for them, and the work there, like our autistic students, it's a kind of a three, a three different type of assessment, and the application piece. So it's really quite different than sitting down and doing a paper pencil. Our ELL students are not allowed to opt out. Our ELL students all are tested. There is some provisions made for them in math and science, but in communication arts, there is no provisions made for them at all, as far as any accommodations. We test all, three through eight. If we do have parents that want to opt out, we can submit that. What is the concern is, we can never test less, or test, have a, less than 5% that are at the level not determined, meaning our district can never have more than 5% of our students not take the assessment.
Correct. So does that play a part of why there was more children taking the test this year?
No, I don't believe so. If they're enrolled, and the, for the high school assessments, if they're enrolled and they are passing the course, they're expected to test.
So the reason for having 140 more children is because they were actually passing the course, therefore allowed to take the test now?
Or they were 140 more enrolled this year in biology.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson.
This question is more so for Dr. Green, but you can most certainly chime in. And so we're definitely on the trajectory, upward trajectory. Last year, there were some things that should have been celebrated. This year, certainly some things that have been, should be celebrated, even preliminarily. And so my question is, what is the part of the conversation with the community about how we can celebrate our success, or just give an overall picture of where we end up at the, at the end of this cycle?
Well, definitely, we have, my team has already been thinking about ways to roll out and engage the community in celebration. We don't want to be premature in that. So we're being reserved until more hard data rolls in. And then, keep in mind, it happens over the course of the summer. And so kind of tied to that is the opening of school and, and being on course for the next year. But we will certainly seek your input as well, and also, we have ideas of how to engage with the entire community in the celebration of what we think is on the horizon right now. And the question that came through the Messis Cube here is to, were all students at all grade levels tested? Of course, the answer to that question is no, because not all, all levels are tested.
That's correct.
In terms of three grades, two, one and two were not. But assuming that the others were all students.
So it's K1, 2. That is not assessed at the elementary level. And then, in the high school, we only assess those end-of-courses that the state requires. So that's Algebra I, as you saw listed there. Algebra I and geometry for mathematics is ELA 9 and 10, biology and government.
Mr. Evans.
Dr. Green, or Ms. Morello, when I see this kind of surge, I'm thinking that someone is going to be asking some questions as to, what did you all do? I think I heard someone say that. How did you get there? Do you expect to get some backlash, or some conversation centered around, I don't want to use that word, but you know what I'm saying?
I do, and, and Dr. Green.
Just a second, just a second.
I'm sorry.
And I kind of like what Ms. Robinson was saying, relative to getting that message out to the community. Somebody mentioned to me that, Dr. Green, perhaps we should do a weekly or monthly radio blast on how that's done on a consistent basis, and not just to report on our test scores, but to kind of keep the community abreast of what's going on in the community. But back to the, yeah.
And I would, I'd like to address that, because I think many might be concerned, that people will be concerned with our increases. But many of you may know, or may not know, that the state sent a person in to observe every building. And they came in, they observed every building, they sent reports in daily to the state on what they observed, what they saw, the communication, how were our test booklets signed out, how were our test booklets put back away. They even sent two that watched us receive the test booklets, that watched us check the test booklets in, and stayed until the last book was Saran wrapped and packed for delivery. So they've watched us from the beginning, when we handed them out, to them being in the buildings, to them being administered, setting in classrooms. I observed them in every building that I went in. I also observed them over at Manual, watching us receiving the test booklets and wrapping the test booklets up to be shipped out. They were there, in fact, two were there every day when the test booklets came back to Manual. So we have been observed, we have been watched. There should be no doubt.
And we were, because of our performance last year, we drew quite a bit of attention, and we anticipated. We have our own internal system that has very high standards. Dr. Morello heads up the MAP Police, and they were out in full force, making sure that we did not violate. We are very much aware of districts that come under the radar screen, i.e. Atlanta, New Orleans, Washington DC. None of that's going on here, you can be very much assured. We are, and we had no violations by DESI trying to find violations.
Mr. West, question? How many buildings had DESI monitors in them during this process?
They were in every building.
And between the monitors at every building, and the monitors at Manual with all that, how many school districts receive that level of kind and support from DESI each year?
After the first week, where they received many calls, DESI did, from my office after Dr. Green gave me the green light and to express concerns because they were poorly trained. In fact, we were training some of them as they come in to understand what the forms look like and what they should do. They quickly then began to move them out into Fort Osage, Hickman, a few other districts they showed up in, and left, and used them to go there. But they were in every building, and some of them would do two buildings, once they started pulling a few to go to some other sites, and I felt like maybe that was to share that knowledge with other districts. But no one received every building like we did in the state of Missouri.
Board members, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morello.
Thank you.
Back with more. Thank you very much. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.